Yes. Good morning and welcome to a special legislative session of Spokane City Council on June 6th this morning, and we are going to start by addressing a resolution. I'm going to have Mr. Wright assist us. Oh, Ms. Fister, call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone. Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Navarrete is absent.
Great, thank you, Ms. Fister, for that. Okay, at this time, we're going to be looking at affirmative resolution for the mayor's executive declaration of emergency. Mr. Wright, do you want to?
Sure. So, in the legislative agenda packet for this meeting today is the resolution ratifying and modifying the mayor's emergency declaration. That was circulated yesterday along with the agenda. Since that version was circulated, there have been conversations, and the council president and councilmember Dillon have agreed to offer an amendment that basically substitutes the entire thing and puts in a new resolution. The main changes between what's in the packet and what is offered as an amendment is in the recitals. They're a little bit more friendly, shall we say, than the first version. There's also some technical language that was added at the suggestion of city attorney Mike Piccolo, clarifying that any money already allocated for opioid issues out of the opioid fund would not be affected by any of the limitations in this ratification. And then, Mr. Piccolo also suggested that the date be changed to September 3rd for termination. And so, under that version, the emergency would end on September 3rd unless terminated by the mayor earlier. The Second Amendment offered by councilmember Cathcart simply changes the termination date to July 22nd unless extended by council resolution. And so, those are the substance of the changes in the two amendments and how they compare to the original that's in the packet.
Thank you. So I think we will take the Cathcart amendment first.
Kenny? That's my recommendation to council was, I could get into the weeds about primary and secondary amendments, but his is fairly straightforward. It changes the termination date. You could consider that, and if you adopt it, it would amount to an amendment of the Wilkerson-Dillon version, and then you could take up the Wilkerson-Dillon version and decide whether to adopt that, and then you would proceed to a vote on the actual resolution.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Bingle has his hand up first. Councilman Bingle?
Yeah, thank you. I think I would suggest if Dillon's and Wilkerson's is substituting the whole thing, taking that one first, and then Michael's amendment seems to make sense to me, but neither here nor there. Mr. Wright, what was unfriendly about the first version? I haven't seen either of them, or I haven't seen the first one, I've seen the updated version, but haven't been able to compare them.
Some of the recitals were phrased in my typical way of writing, which is sometimes in the negative, like somebody hasn't done it this way, or something, somebody hasn't done something that way. We changed some of the verbiage to say that an emergency is in order for certain things, rather than saying there isn't an emergency for some things. So, we also added a whereas at the request of councilmember Dillon that talked about the increase in opioid overdoses since the council's resolution in March, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I would concur with Councilmember Bingle. I just think, why not do the base amendment first and then amend the date if there's agreement to do so? It seems like if you do the date, you're almost overriding that with the second, so it doesn't make a lot of sense.
All right, Councilmember Zepone?
So, do we need a motion to suspend the rules, or can we just motion to substitute?
My recommendation first is that you have a motion to allow both amendments to be actually considered, because we don't have clear procedures for getting stuff on the agenda for a special meeting. So, the council president can simply ask if there's any objection to considering both amendments. If there isn't, they'll not be deemed to be allowed by unanimous consent. That would be the first step.
Is there any objection to considering both amendments?
No.
Seeing none, all right, we will proceed.
Then I'd make a motion to adopt the Wilkerson-Dillon amendment.
You can proceed. My ideas are only recommendations, so however the council president wishes to proceed, subject to whatever the body as a whole decides to do differently.
So, the motion's on the floor to adopt the Dillon-Wilkerson, Wilkerson-Dillon amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved, thank you, is that kidding? It's been moved in second to adopt the DW amendment, Dillon-Wilkerson. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Just clarity, that was a aye from council--
Any objections?
Any objections? Any abstentions? Did you, would you clarify on the votes? All right.
Seven, zero.
All right, all right, that passes.
Now you can proceed to decide on the Cathcart amendment.
I will, I will so move the Cathcart amendment.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Councilmember Cathcart speak to that?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. I just think it's important to have sort of a little bit of an incentive in this process, and I think pushing this out to September just does not incentivize a lot of communication and good coordination between the administration and council. But I think by setting an earlier date, that does incentivize them to need to stay in communication with us, let us know what's going on. A great example is finding out that they've already signed a 90-day lease today, prior to us doing this resolution. And so, no notification, no communication about that to council, at least to myself, I would say. And so, I just think it's important that they be incentivized to communicate with us, and so I think an earlier date makes sense.
I will speak to why I'm not, because I know in the world of social services, by the time they get this up and running, I don't know if they'll have anything to report by July 22nd, really, in the effectiveness of 90 days of getting the facilities, getting the providers, and all the other things that go along with this emergency declaration would be unrealistic. Also, taken into consideration, the summer and our own timeline, and our own vacation schedule that we already have planned, how we could really expect something realistic out of that, so I will not be in support of that.
Yeah, so, if I'm hearing this correctly, the concern is that we just went have updates from now until September, that's the concern?
I fear we're going to be in a black hole for the next four months.
So if we put it as an automatic placeholder on a committee agenda, would that kind of satisfy that concern if it's automatically there?
I guess maybe I'm not understanding. Chris had told me that, on advice from legal, we are not able to rescind a, nor are you able to create some way of an emergency to be rescinded, and so you kind of have to do it upfront. And so, I don't know if you could, I don't think there's a way you could put something that says we're going to rescind this, and then, you know, defer it indefinitely or something like that. So, to me, this is the only way to sort of create that opportunity for, just to have a little bit of leverage, frankly.
If I could add something?
Yes.
We do not have a way to compel the administration to do anything, so you can't compel staff to show up at a committee meeting or study session, so.
Councilmember Bingle, and then, do you want to speak, Councilmember Dillon?
Councilmember Bingle.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I like that there is, in both versions, that there's an end date. I'm glad it's not more than 90 days. What I will say is just my personal experience right now is I don't feel as if I've been getting fairly regular or fairly honest updates so far from the administration when it comes to this particular topic. And so, for me, I like July 22nd as well, just to say, hey, we want updates, and I think there's plenty of updates that can be given in 45 days. I think there's plenty of updates that can be given in a week, right? For example, the fact that we may have already entered into a lease, you know, all the different things that we're doing. I think there's plenty of ways for us to give updates, and, you know, so long as, you know, what is happening is good, then I don't think there's any reason for us to not extend it, but it does give us the ability to end it early if it's not going well or not going the way that we want it to. And obviously, anytime there's this amount of power given, you know, to one person, we should have regular oversight of it. So, I'm not upset at the 90 days. I'm glad that 90 days is in there, September 3rd is in there, but July 22nd also makes a lot of sense to me.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I'll just say that I think I really do like the idea of having this as a standing agenda item on public safety, and looking at what are, what is the progress, what are some of the benchmarks, the impact that this is making, and I think that, you know, that accountability can work both ways, too. By us passing this and approving this, you know, it takes more, it takes two to tango, as they say, so I think that, you know, we can look forward to some updates, and I am hopeful that these measures will make an impact. We're really at a crisis point with overdoses in our community, and we have to try things, new things, and I think that this is a good step in the right direction.
Councilmembers Zepone?
Yeah, I'll just say, I think Public Safety Committee makes a lot of sense, too, and I have faith in the administration that upon request, that they'll be there. Obviously, we can't compel, but I have faith in this administration as being collaborative and wanting to work with us on this, and so I would support the later date.
Councilmember Bingle, do you have another comment? Your hand is still up.
No, no, sorry, my bad.
Okay, all right. I understand what Councilmember Cathcart's saying, but with the 90 days, that also gives some assurance to the providers who will be doing this work. I don't know if I go into a contract for 30 days for what it takes to elevate this work to what we want the outcomes to be, and then not knowing in 30 days it could all go away. I certainly wouldn't commit to that type of contract, so it's not just the administration, but this is also some assurance for the providers who will be doing the work, that they have this 90, at least minimum, this 90-day window to do the work and to hopefully be as effective as we're hoping this outcome to be. With that being said, are we ready to take the vote?
On, this is on the amendment?
On the amendment. So, it's been moved in second for the amendment, which is basically changing the date to July 22nd. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
No?
Me.
Me.
And any abstentions at this, Phil? Thank you all for that. We will now move on to our regular briefing, which we are--
Excuse me, Council President.
Oh.
Can we still actually vote on the--
Let's vote on the resolution, shall we?
And Council President, I just wanted to note, the testimony form was live for 24 hours, we didn't get anybody signed up to testify on this.
Right. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just a couple of things I just want to throw out there. So, I had considered another amendment, and just on the advice of both Chris and legal, I decided not to move forward, but just a couple of points. I think, you know, there's really good things in here, obviously, that the mayor can do, and I just hope that, you know, obviously, we do it right, and we really try to accomplish some good things, you know, one of which was it directs the Spokane Fire Department's medical director to explore options, and actually, it was Councilmember Bingle who brought this up a few weeks back, but Vivitrol, as a medication, can have, it sounds from some research I've done, and I think others have, it can have some pretty interesting impacts, and so I'm really hoping that specifically will be looked at as a potential intervention. Also, another one I just wanted to call out, there's a, it's the 11th bullet of Section 4 of the mayor's declaration, and in it, it talks about the ability to activate properties for, you know, the purposes of dealing with the secondhand division issue. And so, one of the things I was going to try to encourage was obviously to not just simply choose the lower-income census tracts for those vacant properties and the areas kind of that are the default go-to locations, and so I hope, again, that that will be a priority, is to not just simply go where it's easy, such as northeast Spokane, and actually think about citywide, which our comp plan actually requires. Not many people know that, but it is in the comp plan that services such as these need to be dispersed in every neighborhood, not just a few. And so, that's just an important one I just want to call out, and I think that's also important for updates. Again, if we're going to be making leases, activating properties, doing different things, council needs to know our constituents are going to, you know, be potentially upset, have questions, just want to know what's going on, and when they call us, we have to be able to answer. And that has not always been the case with either this administration or the last. So, we just got to do better on that front.
Thank you, Councilman McCatcart. Councilmember Bingle, is your hand still up?
I'm sorry, I can't--
Go ahead, Councilmember Klitsky.
I can't raise, I'm sorry, my phone still thinks I have the wrong version of WebEx. I can't raise my hand, but I do, I do understand Councilmember Cathcart's concern there about dispersment. I think we should try to gather these kinds of services as much as we can throughout the city. I did want to say, as far as the hearing updates and progress stuff about the property acquisitions and this entire, or not acquisitions, but activations, this entire process, I think we also have to make sure and make time in our schedules for that, so I think the public safety meeting's a good place to do that, and if, and we also get updates from the fire chiefs in that meeting usually, so we can also, of course, address those concerns there.
Great. Councilmember Bingle, is your hand still up by accident?
No, not this time.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, again, I think that there's, that there's some good stuff in this, I think that it can, it can help the city, I think it can benefit the city, which is why, you know, earlier, we as the council passed our resolution as well, asking for support from the governor and from the state, and so, I'm curious to see where that takes us. It gives us an ability to do some things, I hope it goes well, and I do want to say I appreciate in this having an end date. I think it's really important that we maintain our oversight of what's happening here in the city, so to the council members who wrote this and put it forward, I don't know who did the original, but certainly to Paul and Betsy for the lead amendment there, thank you for having it be at that, right around that 90 days. I think that's a fair timeframe for us to be exercising our oversight, so thank you for having that in.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zepone?
Yeah, I'm excited to be supporting this and thankful for the mayor and the administration for their leadership in bringing forward efforts to combat this and declaring it an emergency like it is. We just had students from Yasahara Middle School here today, and one of their top issues that they were talking to us about is drug use and their concerns around that, and so this impacts everyone in our community, from adults to kids, and I'm glad we're taking efforts to deal with it immediately, and that this declaration will get us into the necessary agreements to begin an integrated response that will last well past September. And so, I think this will be great to bring those resources from the police and fire to code enforcement, economic development, and state and federal resources, so I'm excited to be supporting this.
Great. I echo that, Councilmembers Zepone. The mayor did not wait for our direction, she took leadership. Her team was creative, they were on it, addressing the challenges. Also, her commitment to leverage other funding to address these problems, recognizing that our budget can't do it alone, and I applaud them for that. Now, are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Councilmember Klitsky's aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingle's aye. Great, thank you very much. Now, on to the regional emergency communications, and Maggie Yates is going to give us the update on what's going on there.
Good morning, councilmembers. Just here for a quick update and answer any questions you have about ongoing communication with Shrek. You likely saw that on April 19th, we received, the mayor received a letter from Shrek leadership, including the board leadership, saying they needed a decision from the city in terms of whether we were going to move police back into, or police into Shrek with fire, who joined in 2022, or move them both out of Shrek, and gave us a deadline of May 24th to make that decision. We have, we, at a regular board meeting on May 16th, I requested a three-month extension beyond that May 24th timeline to give us some more time to do due diligence and understand the financial components, the governance structure, the operational model of Shrek, and they, the Shrek board asked the city instead to make that request in writing and voted down the motion, so the mayor followed up on May 17th, I believe, outlining her concerns and making the formal request that the extension be granted for three months beyond May 24th. Shrek held a special meeting on May 24th to consider the request, and pleased to report that they unanimously voted in support of the extension, so we have an additional three months to look at sort of the three different components that I just mentioned, financial, governance, and operational, to make sure that whatever decision and whatever direction we take as a city, that it gives us the highest level of public safety, and also takes into consideration the financial constraints that we're facing. So, we are in the process right now of looking for a consultant to help us conduct two different feasibility assessments, one of, for both scenarios, one, both fire and police moving into Shrek, and the other option that Shrek presented, which is both fire and police out, and a city piece up, running city dispatch and call-taking 911. So, that's the quick summary of where we are, and we'll have more information as we move through the next three months.
Yeah, thank you for the update on that. I guess, do you have any sense of why, I mean, I don't know if you were in the board room when they voted, but why they voted down the initial request for the extension?
They wanted more specifics of why we were asking for the request and what exactly we were going to do in the three months. They were concerned that we would come back in another three months and continue to make requests without any clear direction.
Well, I just, and just one key component for the feasibility, I think, is to look at, you know, what are the standards they're meeting, because right now, they're not meeting the standards they need to be, and so that definitely has to be part of our consideration, I think.
Absolutely.
So, Maggie, my concern is we're going to have consultants do these studies. A 90-day window is pretty tight to find someone to do the study and to deliver recommendations to the city, so what's our next step, or?
Great question, a concern for us as well. We're working with procurement right now to identify consultants who are already listed on MRSC, who can help us do this and do it in an expedited fashion.
And just while we have you up here, there was quite the article about this recently in the Spokane Review, so was, is there anything you'd like to debunk, or was the article pretty much on point? I just want the citizens to know, because we've been dealing with this for several years, at least Councilman McCatcart and I have been, and it has been inconsistent information at best, I would say. And so, just really want to know if what's out there for our public is truly the correct information for them.
Thanks for the question. I think a couple of things that I would want to add to the coverage. One, fire can, fire chief Julie Oberg is here, and she can speak to fire's experience in Shrek. Their fire administration and leadership is very happy with current services, as far as I understand, but won't speak for her. Police, obviously, is very proud of their dispatch services and has concerns about a change to the model. We were in no rush in terms of making a decision one way or another, and we're happy to, happy with fire in, as long as they were pleased and happy to keep police out for the time being, but we're faced with something that was, felt much more of an ultimatum than an invitation to the city of making a decision in a very expedited time. And yes, several administrations have been sort of struggling with Shrek and making sure that it's serving all city residents appropriately, but we're obviously a new administration, and the mayor has to do due diligence, and so the timeframe was a little bit unexpected, and that's why we've made the request for an extension. I'm working closely with Matt Boston, he's in these conversations with us, because he has the best pulse on, obviously, our city finances, so he's very closely reviewing the financial components of both Shrek's actuals and then also the city's actuals as well.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I guess my two big questions are, you know, the contingency planning, right? I mean, I know that that's something that the consultants are going to take into consideration, but it's the big what-if question. And then, the double tax, right? I mean, that just, that was one of my big takeaways from that article, and the mayor also mentioned that, and I was like, oh my God, you know, I mean, still kind of getting caught up on the history of Shrek a little bit, but that kind of made my jaw drop, honestly, and I think that if more taxpayers knew that, I mean, it would give me tremendous pause to continue down this path.
Yeah, so, to your point, Councilmember Dillon, the Shrek receives 1/10 of 1%, and then also the 911 excise tax. 45% of those taxes roughly are generated within the city limits, and then, Shrek also charges user fees for participating agencies, so fire pays roughly $200,000 a month for participation. Police would also need to pay a user fee if they were moved in. Another piece of the puzzle here is the CAD transition. Shrek is overseeing a transition to a new CAD system, and we all want to be on the same CAD system because it makes regional responses better, but they're charging police $2.5 million if they're going to transition to the same CAD system because they're not a participating agency, so that's something that we're in conversation with Shrek about as well.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up on that, I mean, I guess, and from this article, you know, there was discussion about the gray fire and how through Shrek and having this more regional, multi-agency coordinated effort, there was better results in a lot of the , yeah, just communications, but I guess I would be curious to, what is the contrast to what it was like pre-Shrek, when we still had wildfires, when we did see some large disasters? Obviously, the gray fire was different for Spokane County, but what did some of those response times look like, and, you know?
That's something I can't speak to, I'm not sure if Chief Oberg has that data, but happy to pull, pull what we can to help inform the ultimate decision. I think it's worth reiterating that the mayor's commitment is to public safety and making sure that we have the best public safety response, but there's also multiple factors that we want to make sure we're keeping track of on behalf of city residents.
I'll give Chief Oberg a moment if she wants to say something, or just?
Specific to the data, we do have some data, both when the fire department-- Yep. Specific to the data, we do have some data, both when the fire department was the regional dispatch center, then when we had the bifurcated system, and now the Shrek system. I don't have those committed to memory, so we can certainly get them to you. You know, I think for the fire department, our messaging, and I will exclude any of the financial considerations that are absolutely important, but there is the operational readiness that is difficult to put that financial. It comes upon the governance question. But a regional, I feel very strongly that a regional communication center for a county such as Spokane and a city such as Spokane is vital to public safety. A bifurcated system slows it down. There's no other way to state that. We can have the best centers, both with us and at the county, it is still going to be slowed down, because there is that transition. I think from our standpoint, we receive a lot of mutual aid, and we give a lot of mutual aid to other jurisdictions within the county. And when we're on separate systems, there is a safety concern. I come from a jurisdiction, not unlike Spokane County, that had a regional communication center, not without problems. Any collaboration is going to have issues, and even speaking directly to Shrek, of course, there's room for improvement and there's room for discussions. But as your fire chief, I have grave concerns if we have a bifurcated communication system.
Councilmember McCaffrey.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, I think conceptually, you are, you are correct. But when you look at the data, and Shrek themselves comes here and tells us, they are not meeting the national standard for, for call times. In fact, our own police dispatch is doing far better than them, and they don't have to meet that standard. And that gives me a lot of pause. And it's like, so if there's a slowdown between two agencies, but if there's also, or a slowdown in just the call-taking time, I mean, what's the true significant difference?
I mean, I'd rather sit down with the numbers in front of us and have that conversation. The numbers that I've looked at, we had some of the same issues when we were the primary center. So I think there's a lot of narrative behind statistics that is worthy of having discussions versus taking them just one dimensionally. Again, I apologize, I'm not prepared to have that discussion today, but I welcome sitting down with numbers in front of us and talking statistics.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Chief. I'm sure you'll be part of the decision-making or at the table. Anything else, Maggie?
Yes, one other piece that I just wanted to specify in a little bit more detail is the governance structure. So that's also a concern for the mayor that was outlined in the letter. Shrek right now has, excuse me, a board makeup of 10 seats. The city holds two of those, and final action requires a 70% vote. So as we're thinking about public safety investments that account for city concerns, we want to make sure that we have an adequate voice on the board to address those issues and concerns as they arise that are financial or operational. So that's another piece that we're in conversation about.
Councilmember McCaffrey, then Councilmembers Sapon.
Yeah, so just, just make sure I heard you right. So you're saying that if, if we were to go all in, that the mayor would want to make sure that the city had a third or a fourth seat? Is that what you're saying?
I think what the, what the ultimate makeup looks like is, is up for discussion and debate. I know that it's very important to the mayor to make sure that we have adequate representation on the board. Other models that we've looked at go by call volume rather than board seats, so that's something that we can look at as well.
Yeah, and thank you for all this update. I really appreciate it. I just want to make sure that when we're getting future updates or considerations, to get, what would it cost? The total cost of police going separate, I guess. I've been asking for a while, and hope that'll be clear.
And that's part, sorry to interrupt, Councilmembers Sapon. That's part of what we're hoping to achieve by working with the consultants to put together those feasibility assessments. And then, just this week, the CFO was able to get Shrek's budget actual, so that'll help inform that as well. Definitely part of the calculation.
Thank you, Maggie. I'm sure we'll be hearing more.
Great, thank you.
Next, we're going to have a discussion or conversation around the ARPA. Who's going to lead that?
I think council.
Council. I don't have my list. Can you put the list up?
Yeah, you want me to share, I mean?
I think there was a request from, from us to ask staff to come and give us an update, because I think we've been hearing different things to get us all on the same page as a whole council, on a couple of these requests. And so I think Chief Oberg was just here, so we start with you. There's a request from fire, and so wanting to make sure, kind of, if you can speak to the need for the department and help us all make sure we're on the same page.
Absolutely. I'll start with, we will take any amount of money, and we will have it spent by December 31st in a very fiscally responsible way. So really where, I think with a lot of the discussions that have been occurring, Station 1, we know, is one of our facilities that has a great number of needs, but it also has a great number of concerns, in that we know that its medium-to-long-term plan is it needs a complete rebuild. And so we have been and want to continue to be very responsible in what investments we're making in Station 1, considering that that is not a 20-year fire station. So having said that, probably our number-one issue with Station 1 is the HVAC. In the four years that I have been here, every summer, we have been, we've been down for usually days before we can get certain things fixed. To be honest, the amount that I have heard as far as availability of ARPA is not enough to do the complete HVAC repairs that are needed at Station 1. However, Chief Stockdill, our logistics chief, does have a well-thought-out plan to be able to do certain segments of that that would be beneficial. So specific HVAC upgrades and improvements to help us intermittently get through the summers that we have left in that facility. Another one related to our members' health and safety, as you know, we are there for 24 hours, so we have bunk rooms where firefighters, at night, when we're not having calls, sleep, depending on which unit you're on. We have the tones that sound in the station that let you know that it is your unit. There's lots of studies on the safety of being able to split those tones based on what unit is being dispatched, so that the entire station is not awoken in the middle of the night. These funds, we could easily have, invest in that and have the station where the tones are split. So when the ARU is going out, that's the segment of the station that is, that is sounded and responds. In addition, we have what we call a plimo system, which removes the diesel and exhaust fumes from our apparatus when we're backing in. It is functional and in good shape, other than we have one bay that does not have a plimo drop that we could consider putting that in, and that's for the ARU unit, which is a unit that goes in and out of that station quite a bit. We don't have any absolute current quotes from these that are, that are within the last 30 months, but these have been on our list. So we are relatively comfortable where they, where those pricings occur. And we do know that without a doubt, that any of these items would be easily contracted and completed, or at least underway, prior to December 31st.
Any questions for Chief? So that's all more than $200,000? So you?
But it's, it is segmented. I mean, we would, yes, we would easily be able to take the pieces out and ensure that it's ones that could make. So, yeah, that is a little bit more than $200,000, but we could break it down and get, get part of the list done.
Councilmember Navratia?
I was there a few months ago touring, and noticed in the, in your kitchen, the tiles. It's, they're very out of code. Is that something also on your list that maybe?
The ceiling tiles?
Yeah, there's water leak on the ceiling, and then also on, on the rooms.
Yeah, so the roof repairs were done in 2023 and early 2024. So a lot of those ceiling tiles, we had just stopped replacing, because we were having any significant snow and then melt, and any significant rainstorm, we were getting, getting pretty, pretty big water damage. Since the roof repairs have been done, I will follow up that those, those should be replaced, if they hadn't been already.
Thank you. All right, Chief, thank you very much. Another consideration that we had on our list is the ombudsman office, and I see Mr. Logus here, and I don't know if anyone's from?
Jeff is online.
And Jeff is online. So Bart, why don't you come in now first, and then we'll let Mr. Teal give us the administration. Good morning.
So I wasn't given the scope for what folks wanted from me?
I think we're trying to understand the need and the feasibility and of the project, I guess. And so your need, probably from you and the facility, is probably to explain the feasibility, if that sounds about right.
So to be fair, like the, like the chief, I will take any money that you will give me, and I will also fiscally spend it. No, kidding. You know, this is a project that we've kind of been working on.
Three years?
Longer. I have emails back to 2019, 2018, and I think the conversations were even happening prior to that. I actually tried to use my own, my own, the city's budget funds that they had given to me in our office one year to actually try to get this accomplished. We've kind of been shoved in a corner in City Hall. And hey, we're in City Hall, so that's a good place to start. We do get some, some status by being in, in this building, I think. The problem with our corner, there's a lot of things about our corner that actually work. It's separate from any other department. We don't have a department right next door. They can't hear us through the walls, et cetera, if we had walls. The acoustics on the first floor, though, they're like these old Roman amphitheater kind of acoustics. I can listen to a 3-1-1 conversation at their desk while I'm sitting at mine, and they can hear me as well. So we deal with criminal justice information system, information all the time. There are security requirements surrounding that. So we've tried to come up with creative solutions in order to safeguard materials. In addition to that, our office has been accused of leaking information, et cetera, et cetera. So I would like to close all, all possibilities of being accused of anything inappropriate by anyone. The, we, we keep getting glimmers of hope. We get some advocates that will ask us to do stuff. So we've actually had contractors come in on two occasions and come up with, with price points and all these fancy drawings, and then we turn them in and we get shut down. So we've done that a couple of times. The last time, I believe, was in 2022. I think the, all the different components came roughly around $74,000. And what we were trying to look for to do was to create a, there's a natural barrier that kind of hangs down from the ceiling, which we could just put a straight wall across, and then we could have a waiting area and a place to talk with a complainant in a confidential way. The way our office is situated, we have that one conference room, which is right next door to us, but doesn't have any windows. That's important when it comes to mediations and providing those safe conversations, where we don't need people walking by saying what's going on in the room. We try to keep those things as confidential as possible. So just the refurbishment, I think the quotes have gone from 60 to 78, some odd thousand dollars, the last couple of years of inflation, I don't know. So my guess, it's more than that, but probably not significantly more than that. The goal was to create it so that it looked very similar to the other side of the first floor, where we made those, those confidential, not confidential, but the conference rooms. So kind of that glass idea. But I'm not a designer. I have no authority to make those decisions. We were involved with facilities early on in the process. I did speak with Jeff Teal last night, late. I got a voice message, and we also spoke again this morning, because I'm also aware that there is a study. But the study was an excuse to put me off for three years before. So I don't know what the answer is. I think there should be a short-term solution, but I also don't want to waste city money. So if, 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 if people find that the corner where we've been for the last 15 years is a good space for us, we would agree, but we would need a wall to kind of separate it, so that we can protect information. That's what we're looking for.
Councilmember Bingo has his hand up.
Yeah, hey, thanks for being here, Bart. Yeah, I, I agree. I like where you guys are at. As soon as you walk in, you can just go straight there. You don't have to walk through anything. I think that that's a pretty great location, but I, you know, I don't work there, and so, you know, I defer to you guys. But this is a conversation, I know that's been going on for, for some time. And if we truly want people to feel safe when they come in, if they have a complaint about something, they want that safe space to do it, you know, I know that we've talked about it for a while, but I think this is our opportunity to, to make it happen. And the 175 number that was, was in there was as we were, you know, moving things around. You know, I walked through your guys' office the other day, was just looking, and just wanted to find a way to, as people come in there, not only do I want them to have a wall, but I want them to have comfortable furniture, where they feel like it's a welcoming space, that they're going to be heard, and their concerns are going to be addressed. And so that's, that's where that came from, you know, and I'm, I'm aware that 175 in that, in that total amount's probably too much, and we can adjust that a little bit. But that was the thinking behind the amount there was, finally getting this project done and making it as comfortable and welcoming as possible for people, you know, who may have experienced some, some pretty traumatic events.
Councilmember, I want to kind of hear from Jeff, so we can have both sides to discuss it, so.
Yeah, let's hear from Jeff, and then I'll comment.
Jeff, do you want to share facilities?
Sure. We started the spatialization study on August of 2022, and we asked, you know, we received a bunch of information from all the departments, how many workstations are needed, how many people actually work with the public, who works with money, accepting payments, et cetera. And we got all that information from our first phase of the study. And then that was at the end of the previous administration, and now the new administration started up, and we geared up, and we're into contract now for conceptual space study and space programming on floors one through three, detailed space planning, dependency studies, and schematic designs and concept renderings for the public facing floors right now. We expect to get those results out in probably four to five months, and that's where we're at now with facilities. We haven't been doing any renovations on any of those floors, just because of this study that we're actually in the middle of.
Okay. Councilmember Dillon, then Councilmember McCaffrey.
I would just prefer not to wait. You know, I, this has just been, this predates this council. I think it's, it's time to get this moving. I think that we can scale down the amount. I think the, there's a way to interconnect this with that space study. But I think the, the community appetite, and I think for a lot of folks, has been mentioned, is that this is a good spot for you, right at City Hall, right when you come in. It really does help with accessibility, and I think that there's some definite privacy concerns, as you voiced. So, you know, rather than just waiting, I would rather look at, you know, what is the realistic amount to make this happen and, and go forth. And I, I'm worried about, you know, if we wait five months, again, after waiting years, it's just, you know, we could be in a similar situation. And I, I think that right now, we have this funding. I appreciate Councilmember McCaffrey bringing this forth first in his amendment, and I want to get this done.
Yeah, yeah, this has to get done. I mean, how many times, Bart, have we, have we talked about this since I started on council? And, and it's just been nonstop. And I know, exactly like you said, we get these fits and starts, and there might be some interest from, you know, obviously, in the last administration, we kind of get a couple steps, and then it just, you know, wouldn't really happen, and different things would sort of take over. So I, we've got to get this, this going, get it done. I completely agree with Councilmember Dillon on that. And ultimately, I mean, we're going to, assuming we agree, and this moves forward on the list, but, you know, we'll allocate the money, and then it'll be kind of up to the administration to essentially allow for these investments to, to occur. But I have to believe that they can take this study and sort of segment off this, you know, the first floor, and do that portion first and get it done, or a portion of the first floor and move on. And it, you know, I mean, maybe, maybe council just doesn't have enough clarity on what the full intent of the study is, but I have to believe that there's ways they can, they can do that. So I, I fully support moving ahead, and, and whatever the right number is, I support including that, so.
Councilmember Navratia?
So it's bittersweet to say, as a former OPO commissioner, I know the importance of privacy and, you know, privacy and, you know, keeping voices down. I did a couple of times when I walked by to exit the main entrance, and there's people there, I'm assuming doing complaints, I was able to hear them. I didn't leak anything, but you can definitely hear their voices. And I also echo Councilmember Caffart and Dillon. The sooner we do this, the better. Construction materials keep rising, and then this fortified months quote may turn into three years, and we don't want that. So the sooner, the better. So I'm totally down to supporting this.
Thank you, Bart. Councilmembers, a poll.
Yeah, I just want to ask Jeff kind of that question about if, what the opportunity would be to kind of combine the two, I guess, combine the timeline or, yeah, I guess that's a question Jeff can make it work. If the funding was allocated now, it would just have to be contracted by the end of the year, could the study be shaped in a way to do that?
I can definitely talk to the contractor, to Integris, and talk to him about what this conversation was, to see where it's at in the planning, but I do not know where it's even planned to go, if it's even on the first floor yet. I don't know that. But I could see that it could be a piece of the conversation for sure, because I do understand his, what he's up against.
Councilmember Navarrete?
I'm kind of confused. So there's, they wanted to study, but Mr. Logu said that there's already like plans or a blueprint of what you want it to look like?
Designs.
We created something that we got from a contractor, but that wasn't in coordinate, well, facilities told us where to go to get the thing, but we're kind of independent from the city, so it gets a little convoluted, and I just want to be careful that we're not creating angst as well. We want to fit where we want to fit, but I've saw six or seven years of, Jeff, I don't think ever did this, but people would come down constantly and try to scope down our office to put us in a space about this big. They wanted to put a coffee center right next to us. I'm really concerned about noise next to us as well, and right now, we don't have any of that. We just have carryover the wall.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Bingo, and I think Jeff had his hand up again. Now come back. Councilmember McCaffrey.
Yeah, and the thing is, is that I want to know where the study is going, because I think it's great for us to understand how to better utilize all the space that we have at City Hall. I know that we, as a council, have talked about that for the last couple of years on how do we best utilize the space that we have, which will play an integral role in us moving forward with our budget situation if we can better manage our resources. And so I think the study is really good. I've only been here two and a half years, but what I've found is that studies come and go, and whether or not we act on them is, I mean, it's a wild card. And so while this study has real value, and I appreciate Integris, I appreciate facilities, I appreciate everything that they're doing, I think there's also a way in that study to say, okay, this space is just off limits. It's going to be dedicated to the OPO. We're going to make something nicer. That's what we're going to do. I believe, I have 100% confidence in Integris that they can go ahead and take that and make the adjustment and move forward. So looking forward to the results of the study. I think it's going to be great, but also at the same time, I think it's time for us to move forward and complete that OPO space where it's at.
Jeff?
All I was going to add was, I worked with Bart to get those conceptual drawings back, I think in 2020, 2021, when I first got here. And then I don't know why I didn't move forward at that time. I think it was funding, but just to give you that information, we've already worked together to try to give him that space that he was looking for. And as for the study, it's definitely a phased study to get our first three floors designed for our public facing, and then the next phase will be, what's that look like for the rest of City Hall to kind of drop the floors down to figure out how we're using our space? In my mind, it's not a study just to have a study. It's a master plan for City Hall.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yeah, and I think the real question, and maybe nobody knows the answer, is, is there a proposal or a plan or a thought that we might relocate the ombudsman office? Because to me, that would be the only reason you wouldn't do this, but it doesn't seem like, even if that is the case, that that would be a this year, next year, year after sort of thing. I think that's going to be a ways down the road. Obviously, it's not clear where much or any of the capital costs would come from for a full rehab of City Hall and whatnot, which probably makes a lot of sense, and I've advocated for some things like that. But I have to believe the ombudsman office isn't going anywhere. And so I, to me, I have no heartburn over committing this and moving forward on this. But I would just think that Jeff can talk to the contractor and just say, hey, like, this is the situation, and this is going to be our ombudsman office in perpetuity, unless you have some grand alternative that makes it even better for them, so.
All right, Bart, we're going to let you go. Got a couple more conversations. Thank you all for that. Jeff, do you still want to comment?
I'm just, one quick comment, and that is that Bart and I talked earlier that the north precinct in the Intermodal is vacant, and it might be an opportunity for him to relocate if it is an option. I told him that I don't have the answers. I don't know how his department operates, but there is vacant space, which is the old precinct in the north, or, excuse me, the Intermodal building.
Great, thank you. Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yeah, last one, last one. I would defer to you on any relocating, but personally, if it was me, if I was looking to relocate, I would be looking at like River Park Square Mall, or Northtown Mall, or someplace where you actually have foot traffic and people. I don't know that the Intermodal Center is getting traffic, so that's just my thought.
Or if there is space in a community center that could actually accommodate the OPO office. All right, great, thank you. I just want everyone to know that we had allocated $175,000 in conversation with Bart. It's like that wouldn't be necessary, so I made a proposal after the press conference on Tuesday. We also need a transportation van for our substance abuse program. We have Car 50. We do need Car 51, and Car 50 is pretty old. That came to us two years ago under Chief Schaefer, and we did not move on it as part of our contract with STARS. If we're actually going to be able to deliver on the services that are being promised, we do need another vehicle. Last count was about $75,000. If OPO does not need that 175, I had recommended advisement to allocate that money towards the van for the police department. All right. Marlene? About sidewalks?
I think the intent is this more for us to all understand and then keep talking, I guess, about specifics and priorities of folks, I think. Kind of trying to get clarity on all this.
Yeah, thanks for that.
And I think you've got background on this idea?
A little bit. You know, I mean, I think my concern right now is that I don't really have a baked idea. And so the ability to contract out by the end of the year with ARPA dollars concerns me. We don't have a list at this point of sidewalks that we want to see repaired. The information in GIS is not entirely accurate for sidewalk that is not, we're better where we have missing sidewalk to identify in the GIS system, not necessarily where we have damaged sidewalk. We know to be more efficient, we'd want to replace a half a block to a block of sidewalk. So we should go out and identify locations, those kinds of things. We think a million dollars would pay for the replacement of 12 to 15 blocks of sidewalk, depending on complications, right? So is it at a corner, so it doesn't need a curb ramp? Are there trees that are lifting it up? That can be more expensive to manage around mature trees that are lifting up the sidewalk. Is it on a steep slope? Those things add cost. Flat areas that can simply be swapped out are easier to replace. So when we consider these things, and I know that we talked about the potential of maybe having, you know, the one thing that we thought we could contract for would be having a third party, and people apply to the third party to have sidewalks replaced, because that would be a sort of a more straightforward contract. However, that limits the amount of money that actually goes into sidewalk repair by quite a bit in this case, based on previous contract experience. So my thought today is this. If we want to create a pilot project for sidewalk, and I'll get on the same page, how we're going to identify sidewalk, whether we want it to be repair, whether we want it to be infill, whether we want to be around certain locations, could we say, invest that million dollars into the traffic calming projects that are already moving ahead, and then use a million dollars from traffic calming to come up with a pilot without the same time constraints, so that we could actually have a conversation, develop something that's not on the fly, but free up the money, essentially spend it on traffic calming, which we know that ARPA dollars could be spent on. We know those projects are moving ahead. You've already awarded the contract for Cycle 10. Cycle 11, just the bids came back, so you're going to award that contract here in the next week or so. And so we could use those dollars instead of traffic calming dollars and free up the million dollars and take some time to decide what council really wants out of that, and we could answer those questions. And identifying locations, whether you want that to be a community-driven process, whether you want it to be like how you identify unpaved streets, that kind of thing. So I'm just concerned about the unknowns right now and my ability to deliver on a contractual basis by the end of the year.
Councilmember Bingo.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Marlene. I know we've had a lot of conversations about this. And so, sorry, I'm looking at my notes here. So I know that we might not have a list of the broken sections who we might need to go out, but I believe Luis does have, as we've chatted, Luis does have a list of, here's places where we've gone and reached out to people and let them know, hey, you've got a broken sidewalk and you need to repair that. And so I think we do have a natural list that's already built in based on code enforcement and complaints that people have already gotten. And because of those complaints, you know, there is documented discussion about these, which might open us up and the property owner up to some liability if those things don't get replaced or repaired. And we've seen how much money we've had to pay out on broken sidewalks here in just the last few months. We've paid out, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay for people who've fallen on sidewalks, and rightfully so. And so for me, this is a project where it might not be a half a block, right? It might just be a few sections of the sidewalk, just so that we remove the liability from the individual who might not have the ability to pay for it, and it removes the liability from us as a city. And so I think we do have a list, and I think it makes a lot of sense for us to address those. And then if there are, you know, places where if we addressed all of those right there, we wanted to do some infill with sidewalks, I know you said 12 to 15 blocks, depending on complications there. And I think we kind of already do this when we're, even when we're talking about unpaved streets, the street projects that get chosen to pave also are the ones where we find we're going to get the best bang for our buck, and I think we could do that with, you know, our infill projects as well, as we're looking 12 to 15 blocks, depending on complications, or even repair based on complications. If we have too many projects to be repaired for the money that we have, I think we can choose based on most bang for our buck out of this. And I still like the idea of pulling more money, you know, from traffic calming to help get sidewalks repaired or infill projects done through traffic calming. I don't think those are mutually exclusive. I think they can supplement each other in a way that's really effective for the city, and especially when we're talking about one-time investment dollars. It's hard to beat concrete sidewalk investment that's going to last for 100 years.
Councilmember Sapon?
Yeah, thanks, Marlene, for that update. I think that we've also been hearing something about Kevin's list, or something like Kevin has projects potentially that we could.
Kevin does not have a list. He confirmed that for Abby. He has some old information from when we used to do the CDBG work, but it hasn't been updated. So, and we haven't done CDBG sidewalks for a number of years. So we, so Kevin does not have a list. Kevin would be here, but he had a conflict meeting. So my information is Kevin's information. So, and I hear what the council member's saying about replacing panels. I can't get you 12 to 15 blocks of sidewalks if we're going panel by panel, because we're mobbing and demobbing too much. So that's going to be more expensive if we're just replacing a panel or two.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
So we don't know necessarily where the broken sidewalks are, but we do know pretty well where the missing sidewalks are, do we not?
We know better where missing sidewalks are. So see, this is the conflict. Some people want to have infill, some people want to replace small panels, some people are supportive of, we have a really bad block next to a park or something like that. So, I mean, this is my challenge here, is I don't know how we come to consensus on the sidewalk repairs that we want to include in the project in the time period we have, and then let out a contract, scope it and let out a contract.
The way I had put it in my amendment was that essentially we would target areas where children walk to school, and it's inside the Spokane Target Investment Area. And so I think that kind of narrows it, and then you could pick the block faces that meet those parameters and get them done. But that's just my thought.
Right.
Sorry to interrupt, I can't raise my hand. Can you hear me?
Councilor Klitschke?
Yeah, sorry about that. I think that Marlene has given us a really good alternative idea if we want to move forward with sidewalks. But having been involved in many iterations of the traffic calming process and been working with her for months on trying to crack this sidewalk nut, I can tell you that even though everything, everyone is saying makes sense, a lot of sense, it's a lot more complicated than you think when you try to prioritize and make it fair and find projects that fit a certain scope and then get them out to bid and have them be the cost that you need them to be to achieve your goals. So I think that Marlene is right that she needs more time to bake this idea, but we have been baking it. And so I think we need to have faith in the fact that we have already identified sidewalks as a priority and have been working on it from two different strategies. And anybody who wants to get involved and start coming to those meetings, I'm happy to see you there. We can deal with quorum issues if it comes to a quorum, but the commitment is there. And we're hearing that it's not, it's going to be a hassle, it's not impossible to do it with ARPA dollars. And so we can either go with the choice that she has given us and offset some traffic calming dollars, or we can choose another project to do this with and go with the plan of taking some of those unused TBD dollars from the police not doing traffic calming because of their staffing issue. So, I mean, we have a lot of different paths before us, and I feel like because we're so worried about sidewalks, justifiably so, we are trying to put a round peg in a square hole, when this is one clear example of a place that we have other options to fund it with. So I just want to reiterate what Marlene said. By, in my experience, this is, everything she is saying has been very true the last 20 years trying to work on these kinds of issues.
Councilmember Navarrete, do you want to speak?
No, I'm still.
Councilmember Sapon?
Marlene, I was, what it does, do you currently have staff capacity to kind of create a new program, or would you need funding to create a position or a part-time position or project employee to create a type of program? And again, I think this is kind of a question the council is like, which is our priority? I thought the original intent was repaired, especially to low-income households, which I don't think you have done that type of program before, where it would be grants or a program of administering it to low-income households to repair.
Right, so that, yeah, that's where we started bringing up the sort of the SNAP location, because we typically have not done income verification out of our Public Works teams. Even when we dispersed delinquency money, we used existing information about people who had already pre-qualified for U-Help or Project Share or lived in a qualified census tract, that's how. And then any additional income verification went through the third-party vendor, because it's not something that we typically would do ourselves. So that does add a complication layer that we would have to figure out. As far as could we do a pilot project and actually identify locations and get those out, I think we could do that. I don't know that we could do it by the end of the year, because something else may fall off the plate as we're trying to get everything done. But for a long-term sidewalk program, I mean, we would want to evaluate that. I don't know that I have the answer today whether we could include that in our current capacity, but we would want, we would want the ability to look at that.
Can I follow up real quick? If Public Works were to do the verification, I mean, would it just be a capacity needing another person to sort of do that work?
Well, definitely, because there's nobody in Public Works that does that. I mean, we could probably, we should have talked to CHHS. Those kinds of people have, I mean, that's not something, I mean, we're much more bricks and mortar, if you will, so.
Councilmember McCaffrey?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I don't think we should be taking the time to do that, and I think that's such a narrow focus, too. It'd be really hard for economies of scale to really do a lot. But at the same time, I do know that, is that not kind of what the plan is going forward for residential parking downtown, is to do an income verification and change the rate for folks who are low-income or qualified low-income or something like that? And so we're going to have a system. And so we're going to have a system there. I don't support, I don't think that's the right direction, but supposedly we're going to have a system there. So could that system not do all of this other work, too?
So I haven't looked into that, Councilmember McCaffrey. So parking is in Steve's division, so I was unaware of that component, but certainly I could look into that and get back to you on what their plans are there.
Because I do have big questions as to how they're going to do that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I just know that's not something that's really been within our wheelhouse and we've resisted having that kind of personal data about our customers just for a variety of security reasons and so forth.
Understood.
Yeah.
So just clarity, are traffic calming funds could be used for sidewalks?
Yes, traffic calming funds could be used for sidewalks.
So sustainability going forward. All right. Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, I just, guys, I just really feel like we're making this more complicated than it needs to be when we're talking income verification or low-income households or anything like that. I think there's a very easy tool in low-income census tracts, distressed census tracts. I don't think we need to overcomplicate it. I think that's very simple. It was intended for sidewalk repair. And again, Luis has a list there. I don't think that it's, and I hear everything Marlene is saying, you know, but also I just think we're making it more complicated than it needs to be. There are certain things that need to be worked through, but I just, I feel like there's a more, more simple solution than what we're discussing through right now.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I just have a question for you, Councilmember Bingo. So under your proposal, your and Councilmember Navarrete's proposal, were you still thinking about this kind of partnership with SNAP? No?
Not after the 30% admin fee came in. That seemed to be quite a bit. But like I said, I know that Luis has a list of places where they've gone out and done it. And so, I mean, maybe we could ask Luis. Luis, if we contract with you for a half a million dollars or a million dollars to go out and help repair this kind of stuff, can you work through the contractors or anything? I know that that's not typically how we do things, but I just, I feel like we're just making this too complicated.
Yeah, and to look at where the complaints have come in about, yeah, gotcha.
Do you want to speak, Councilmember Navarrete?
Really quick, yeah, we have a list of complaints also for sidewalk repairs and I'm sure we can get more when we go to the neighborhood council meetings. But yeah, we're not up through that 30% charge for SNAP. No.
Marlene, if we were talking about panels instead of half blocks or blocks, any rough estimate, I won't hold you to it, sort of?
You know, I just, I just don't have a sense because it becomes in the mobilization at each location and whether you get people who are interested in doing that, right? So when they can do a half a block, it's a little bit more of a, I'm at one place for more than just a half an hour. I mean, I know it's more than a half an hour, but I mean, it's the mob and demob that I'm concerned about in a panel here, a panel there, a panel here. When we used to do some of that, when we used to do the CDBG work, I'm not sure if they were doing it panel by panel, but I do know that that was a challenging program that they haven't, that they gave up because of. So I would want to look at that before I committed to any, anything that was that small. And also I want to make sure that, you know, when we were talking about that, like when we say what the complaints are, well, we, I looked at Luis's list of complaints and in some cases somebody got upset and then they reported all their neighbors. Well, so is that what we want to do or is, do we want to have some sort of level of priority? I know like Councilmember McCaffrey says, well, is that on the way to a school? Maybe then I would want all those neighbors to have all of those fixed, but if it's not, which the priority? And I think that's where I don't have consensus. I'm hearing, I'm still hearing different things from the dais today. And that's my concern is that by the time we sort through the different priorities of the council members, I feel like my ability to turn a contract is going to be impacted.
So your suggestion is we put this million dollars into traffic calming, then that allows us a little bit more, for sidewalks, but allows us the time to really nail down the program and how we want it to be implemented? Or really what we want to?
Or I just hear give a more flexible funding source such as traffic calming instead of ARPA so that you have a timeline and that's what I'm hearing. The funding source would be more beneficial, have a longer timeline.
Yeah, but my point was with that is if you wanted to invest a million dollars of ARPA, we could do that in a different way by putting it in traffic calming, giving us ours. And gosh, if we're successful and we get it done at the end of the year, it's sort of no harm, no foul, right? But we just have a little more assurance that we're going to not give up that money and give it back to the federal government, right? So if we can do it that way, then I have less concern that I won't be able to deliver for you.
Councilmember Bingo and Councilmember McCaffrey.
Yeah, and just so we're clear, in Councilmember Navarrete's most recent proposal and mine, that number's been lowered to a half a million, I believe. So Jacoby, do you still have that up on the screen?
I can pull it up.
Council President, I do show it as $500,000.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright. Okay, Councilmember McCaffrey.
I guess I would just say, I mean, I'm open to this idea. It's essentially, it's just moving some block pieces to get us where we want to go. But at the same time, frankly, I mean, it's effectively supplanting and aren't there some other things we could supplant to sort of buy us more time on $5 million? I mean, if we really felt the need. And so that's another just thing we could talk about.
Absolutely.
Okay. Were there any other concerns on the Navarrete-Bingo list? I had wanted to ask for more clarification around their youth sports. Councilmember Navarrete and Bingo, really how that was going to, really how we want to see that play out and get encumbered by the end of the year? So you guys want to speak to that?
So we do have several nonprofits that are going to apply for this. And we've done the research. We've listened to the folks that are heading this after school or youth sports and they are, I mean, they go from like Union, from Nuestra Raíces, to Special Olympics, Thrive. And just listening to the programs that they offer, that includes also like psychologists, not only for the youth, but for the parents also, it's, it's just a great way of like having kids do something during the summer, even for the fall, and it just keeps them out of trouble.
I'm going to have Michelle. She didn't think I was going to call on her, but I'm going to put her on the spot. She's smirking. And then Councilmember Bingo. So Councilmember Bingo, I'll get with you. So I'm supportive of youth sports. I asked Michelle Murray from Contracts what that would actually look like and what we would have to do to get that money encumbered by the end of the year. And so your synopsis on that was?
Thank you. So we would have to go out for an RFP for a third-party person or a third-party organization, like some sports organization in town to administer the program of awarding the funds to qualified participants. So they would have to have an existing program in place, some type of an existing scholarship program so that they have ideas of qualification, who's eligible, are they in a underserved population, those kinds of things. They'd have to have some type of a program that's already existing. We can't develop that program and implement that program before the end of the year.
They do. They have all that. We've done all the background on that, that they already have income qualification for kids. Most of these organizations are from or serve underrepresented communities, BIPOC, immigrant children, refugees. So I think all of what you need to see, we check all the boxes.
And all I'm saying is that we're going to have to develop an RFP and it will have to go out for RFP for people to compete, to administer the funds. And so that takes a process as well.
So the RFP for a third-party to do that and then the organizations would have to work with the third-party or apply to the third-party?
No, the third-party would be the organization.
Would be the organization, okay. So I think the challenge was for $250,000, the city wasn't going to try to manage five organizations?
No. I mean, you can give out multiple awards. I mean, that's your prerogative. You could take the 250 and board it and say you want to award it to two organizations or three organizations. That's just more contracts that we have to monitor. And then we just have to take into consideration that the modules in neighborly that we use to process these applications and put these publications out to the public, there is a cost to that as well.
Yeah, I guess for me, I just want to make sure that this is truly like open and competitive and not just SYSA is going to get a check. I just don't think that's the right direction for this. And, you know, they have some really good sports that kids play, but there's a lot of other things out there. I mean, I would love to see this structured in a way that whether it's Rick Wellerver in his gym downtown or Chauncey Wellerver in his gym up in Hilliard, they could come and apply to that RFP and say, hey, we can do 20 spots for kids and they can apply for that. And that should be a way that this can work and it's not just soccer, it's not just lacrosse, it's not just these bigger sports, but it's a whole host of different ones. And they could be individualized sports, not just team sports. To me, that's also really important.
So that's again, the development of the RFP and telling what organizations can qualify to apply and then what we're asking them to manage. How much is it going to cost us to pay you to manage the 250K if you did one contract and then give them $125,000 for equipment in certain areas and then maybe 120,000 for sports fees, team fees, you know, whatever it is, case may be. But they need to have a program in place to qualify the, and I say applicants, but I use that as the community so that they would have to have a program in place for the community to come and say, I want to do this and I'm in need and prove that they're in need and be approved for the funding.
What do you mean by they have to prove that they are in need? Because the way it's written, it doesn't say anything about being in need, doesn't have income qualifications, none of it.
That, let me take a step back. For us to treat it as a sub-recipient, to award to an organization, to administer these funds to the public, they should have some type of a program or application process to go through to receive those funds.
So I think what the application would be, is it for low-income? Is it marginalized communities? Is it just open, there's no financial?
Well, but if that's what was there, I would agree with that, but that's not what's there. Is there some background ARPA requirements that the programs have to be focused on a certain income level or?
We would set the parameters in the notice of funding on what they would do with it. But, you know, this is also supposed to be COVID-related funding and it's, they target that it was all to the underserved, underpopulated.
Well, affected by COVID.
Right.
Councilmember Bingo and then Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there's no shortage of sport, of youth sports organizations in this town. There's no shortage of people who would apply for an RFP, right? And that includes individual and team sports. And the idea, I think for Councilmember Navarrete and I behind this is that, you know, there are people, again, heavily affected by COVID. Obviously, all of the inflation we're experiencing is heavily tied to the COVID funding that went out. I think all of this is happening. And to me, it's not just low-income folks, right? I mean, very firmly middle-class folks are also cutting out things like youth sports because now eggs are way more expensive and gas is way more expensive and we're still trying to adjust. And the idea is for sports and for equipment and scholarships, for, you know, season dues or whatever it is, for kids to be able to come in and play. That is going to be low-income folks and, you know, middle-income folks. They're going to need the funding to be able to come and do these things. And there are certain sports that are far more expensive, you know, than others. I mean, hockey, for example, to get all the equipment for hockey is incredibly expensive. And so, you know, maybe we only get 10 kids who get to play hockey, but we can get, you know, 25 or 30, you know, who can go play soccer. But I'm telling you guys, there is no shortage of youth sports organizations that will compete and apply for these grants. This money will get out the door. This money will go to be effective, to help kids stay in sports despite the fact that families are having less money to spend on things like this. And so I just, again, this is one that 100% that money will get out the door.
Councilmember Klitschke, then Councilmember Zepone. And then Dillon, okay.
Hi, I'm proud of myself for figuring out how to raise my hand.
We noticed.
Thanks, Donovan, for your comments there. I think there might be a way that you guys could write this out that would specify that. I think that there's a known issue in the community where people are not low-income enough to qualify for services but still clearly need help. And I think maybe like having that spelled out in the RFP, maybe you could write some guidelines for the RFP that kind of state that goal. I think that's a really good point, especially on this topic is you can still be struggling and not be on these super-low-income qualifying programs.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, thank you. And I think when you think about need, too, it's organizational need and this bucket of money, 250,000 split, however it ends up getting split, will go a long way to a lot of these organizations and helping them. And then I keep, you know, in my mind, I think we were at STA and had comments from Adam Swinyard and some of the youth data around the importance of the whole engagement for when students are out of school. So after hours during summer and really thinking about the whole student's life and how important that is for success and youth sports are an integral part of that.
I would say youth sports and activities. But just to understand, I don't think I was understanding entirely between the two here. Is the proposal to do a third-party administrator or is the proposal to do direct to organizations? And I guess I'd look to the council member for that.
Direct to organizations.
Direct to organizations. That's what I thought, too. And so to Michelle, I guess the question then, that becomes those organizations have to submit for reimbursement. And on your end, I guess to understand how many organizations can be due, there needs to probably be a dollar amount minimum because you can't be awarding $1,000 to 200 organizations, or can you? I guess that's what I'm trying to, if this is direct to organizations, what's that look like?
So it would be up to your discretion whether you wanted to make one award to an organization to administer these funds to the community. You can make the determination that you got $250,000. That's what, five $50,000 awards? You can put out a notice of funding for organizations to apply for a $50,000 an award and then they would have to submit for reimbursement that way. So it's all, you can design it a couple of different ways.
So then I guess the question, if it was someone like Chauncey that was doing it and he were awarded $50,000, how, I'm trying to figure out how does he get that to reimbursement? Because he would forego revenue to expand programming. He probably has to hire staff to expand programming and he would have to pay that staffer before, and that's just an example. I'm just saying, an organization, if they're going to expand services, they would have to hire a person and they would have to pay them and then submit for reimbursement for payment? Or can they invoice and we pay the invoice of that pay?
Again, if you have the parameters and the program set up to give scholarships, I would think they would just send us the invoice and we would pay the invoice for that student or athlete.
So they could just directly send the scholarship amount or whatever, the amount the student needs, okay. Trying to get.
I will say, in my mind, with $250,000, it made sense, understanding the timeline, understanding the work involved, five organizations getting $50,000, something along those lines did make a lot of sense in my head. And again, there will be no shortage of organizations applying for this and we can shape the RFP, you know, however we want it to be, but there's no shortage of organizations that would be applying for these dollars.
And if I can add, the ages that we, when we went to visit these organizations, the ages range from three-year-old to maybe 14, 15, some 18.
Yeah, and Councilmember Zepone said it and it's how I wrote it in my amendment that I introduced last week, is it should also be activities because, you know, like our PAL program right now, our youth police program, they are doing a lot of art-related type stuff with those kids. And that's something a lot of kids are interested in. They may not necessarily want to go play soccer, but they might want to paint, they might want to do something more, you know, technological. And so just having those at least options for folks who might be pursuing these dollars, I think would be important.
Councilmember Klitschke, is your hand stilled up? Oh, she took it down.
Oh, she took it down. All right, well, that gets us to the end of our study session today, unless you're thanking Michelle for that. Is there any more questions or clarity around the current? Councilmember?
Did we have Dawn coming down to discuss HRS?
She is not in today.
Okay.
So that'll be at a later, yes, I double-checked on that, at a later study session. Thank you all. Remember, we will be at the MLK Center next Monday night for our town hall meeting in District Two. Thank you and have a great weekend.